Okay, uh, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call please. Can you guys turn your mics on? Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Bottalotto is absent.
Yep.
Mr. Iftikhar.
Yes.
Mr. Pico.
Here.
Mr. Velardo.
Here.
Mr. Yagnam is absent at this time. Mrs. Harold.
Here.
Mrs. Sharps.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, this is to advise the general public and to instruct that it be recorded in the minutes that in compliance with chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 entitled The Open Public Meetings Act, Stanhope Board of Education located at 24 Valley Roads, Stanhope, New Jersey, has caused this notice to be posted at the Office of the Stanhope Board of Education, mailed to the New Jersey Herald, the Municipal Clerk of the Borough of Stanhope, the Stanhope Post Office, and posted at the Valley Road School, and on the Stanhope Public Schools website, setting forth the time, date, and location of the meeting. The Stanhope School District, in partnership with the community, commits to provide a quality, comprehensive education for all learners, with equal emphasis on academic excellence and citizenship through values, respect, and service. Our vision is to inspire and cultivate a community of innovative, curious, compassionate, globally-minded learners, equipped with knowledge, problem-solving skills, and the ability to persevere to make a positive impact on society and shape a better future. Okay, oath of office for Mr. Iftikhar. Yep, go ahead.
I, Najeeb Iftikhar, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear the true faith and allegiance to the same and to the government established in the United States and this state under the authority of people, so help me God. I, Najeeb Iftikhar, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualification prescribed by law for the office of member of a Board of Education, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Thank you. Welcome back.
Thank you.
All right, presentations.
All right, two short presentations today. The first one, I'm proud and privileged to welcome Mrs. Christina Morrison. Ms. Morrison has been nominated and selected as this year's Governor's Educator of the Year for the Stanhope School District. In short, she is our Teacher of the Year. Ms. Morrison teaches 5th grade. She specializes in math and social studies and has been in 5th grade as long as I've been here. This is my 11th year. You've been, what's that?
Seventeen.
Seventeen years, all in 5th grade? Okay. I think, you know, to me, the most important thing that Ms. Morrison brings to the table is just the positive rapport that she's able to develop with her kids every year. In my 11 years, I have never had a single student, parent, or staff member complain or share any, any concern whatsoever. She's knocking on wood over there. Because she treats everyone as equals, and she treats these kids as if they're her own. You know, I can't think of a more deserving person than Ms. Morrison. I don't have anything tangible to hand you today. We'll have our luncheon reception in April, I believe, where she'll be recognized at the entire county. But I would like you to come on up so that we can show the world of people watching on YouTube how much we appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Right. Okay. The second presentation is not as much fun. It's the SSGS. It's Student Safety and Data Systems Platform. This is where we, as a school, report twice a year any incidences of violence, vandalism, HIB, or any other safety concerns. For the first reporting period of the school year, we reported three incidents of violence, vandalism, substances, weapons, and HIB confirmed. All three of those instances are confirmed HIB investigations. There were two other alleged HIB investigations that were not confirmed. We also report the trainings and programs that are offered to students and staff related to HIB, and we reported 14 trainings for staff and 19 programs for students. That report was submitted by Ms. DiCataldo, and I'll affirm it tomorrow once the Board votes to accept the report. That's all I have for presentations.
All right, moving on to your report.
Okay.
Unless there's questions.
Nope. Questions?
Okay.
For my report, zero HIB investigations and zero suspensions to report since our last meeting. I'm thrilled to announce that we've had, one, two, three, four, five, six students nominated for the Superintendent Roundtable Award for this year. The Superintendent Roundtable Award is, in my opinion, the highest honor that we bestow on an 8th grader in our district. It is an award that's given to either a 6th, 8th, or 12th grader in every Sussex County district, depending on the structure of the district. And we have six wonderful, wonderful candidates this year. They are Claire Frank, Josh Perry, Kylie McDonald, Sienna Zapata, Aiden Bruner, and Jacob Lachettes. All of the students have been tasked with writing an essay to share a little bit about themselves, why they're deserving of this award. That essay is due on Tuesday. It will then be distributed to all teachers of 8th grade students, who will then cast their votes and decide who will be this year's 8th grade student superintendent roundtable award winner. The next item that I have is a project that we've been discussing for some time now, the door project. So for Mr. Iftikhar, who's new, well, newish, welcome back. We are hoping at the latest in the summertime, if not sooner, to replace every single classroom door in the building. Aside from the doors just not functioning as efficiently as we would like them to, we'd like to improve safety mechanisms as well. We had an initial quote of replacing all of the doors with new hardware and locking mechanisms at about $200,000. The Board had asked that we investigate additional safety, I guess, safety criteria for these doors, and we looked into having an electronic swipe to open and unlock the doors. Although we don't have a tangible quote, we have an estimate of about an additional $160,000 to do that on the doors. I think our architect didn't want to go forward with the quote because he saw the number and said, "We can't believe you would even want to move forward with this." However, you know, we're in a position financially, because of the reserves that we have, where it's not off the table. So I wanted to bring that to the attention of the Board, allow you to digest, allow you to formulate questions, have discussions if you'd like. I fully expect to have these further discussions with our business committee in February, hoping to meet with the architect before then to get at some additional details on how that swipe entrance would work. But I'm hoping at the February meeting to move forward a contract for the Board to vote on so that we can get the project started.
And Najeeb, you're on business, so.
So you'll hear a little bit more about it in a couple weeks.
We'll look to you and Yakub to bring that back to us with your information.
So like I said, the base quote for the doors, we talked about the push-button locks and the protective film over the glass is about $200,000 to do the entire school minus the main offices, because they're all pretty new doors already, and about $160,000 in addition, so that teachers and staff can use the swipe card that they use to get into the building to quickly unlock their door. Okay. Number four, I met, I believe, on Monday or Friday, I'm sorry, my days are all running together, with our entire 6th and 7th grade student body, and I shared with them the opportunity for student advocate, since we didn't have any 8th graders who demonstrated interest to me. I shared what the expectations were, what the commitments were, and emailed the job posting to all of the students. Since I've received emails from two students who are interested, I received one just early this week and one immediately last week, and my hope is, early next week, to meet with any interested students, review their applications, and determine if one or both, or if there's anybody else that we feel as though would be a good fit. I will tell you that they're 6th grade students, so they're young. I think that it would be worth discussing whether or not, if these students are willing to make the commitment, that we hold on to them for next year, you know, if they're successful in their duties, so that it gives them a little bit, you know, more of a timeframe, right, to, you know, work with the Board and communicate the wishes of the student body. I have two real quick items in addition to my initial four. We've been working very hard on the budget. I know it sounds crazy, it's mid-January, but this is budget season. We're hoping to put together a meeting for our Budget Committee, probably within the next two to three weeks, I would say. In schools, however, we're almost playing with fake money, because the budget address doesn't happen for another month, at least, and so we're just kind of guestimating what state aid numbers we're going to have. We're currently budgeting at a flat state aid, and at 80% for all of our titles, which we feel pretty confident will at least come in at. But yeah, if you have, you know, any questions or interest in budget, feel free to let us know, but we do plan to have a meeting scheduled in the next three to four weeks. And then, lastly, I put an email out, or I will be putting an email out for the Calendar Committee to meet on January 30th. I know Mrs. Harold and Mr. Yagnam have already shown that they're able to attend, and I have Mrs. Benedetto representing the teachers and Mr. Bill McNair representing the paraprofessionals.
I have a question on the doors.
Sure.
I didn't want to interrupt while you were doing that. If it's approved, that the project goes forward, will they do it in the summertime or before the summertime?
So we will be looking at it as a summer project. However, it's appealing to some contractors, and I believe the contractor that we're planning on using, which is the main people for schools and doors, that they may wish to work second shift after school has been dismissed, to knock out two or three doors a night, so that that opens them up for additional jobs in the summer, and if that's something that they would like to do, we would be totally agreeable to it, as long as it doesn't impact the safety of the students and the staff, and that, you know, we'll be able to utilize, you know, the appropriate keys to get in and out of the classrooms.
The reason why I asked that question was that, with the way things are going today, a project like that should really be done as soon as possible. It would be good if they could do it at night.
You mean in terms of cost, or?
No, in terms of safety.
Safety, gotcha, yeah.
The cost, if we approve it, the cost is the cost.
I wouldn't, so I wouldn't say that our doors right now are unsafe, they're just not efficient. The locking mechanism, so we have a magnet system where we use a magnet to cover the door's latch, so that the doors can stay locked all of the time and still open and close without the teacher having to use their key to unlock it.
Okay.
So we did a lockdown drill today, so when the drill is announced, teachers take their magnet out, they close the door, it's immediately locked. With these new, with these new locking mechanisms, there's a push button, so the doors will not have to be locked all of the time. They can stay unlocked, because as soon as a lockdown or an emergency situation occurs, push the button, you close the door, it's now locked. You also then have the protective film. So I agree with you 100%. If we can get them done earlier, we certainly will.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Good. Questions? Okay, so for me, I left some handouts. It's actually been busy since last week. I had two meetings with Mr. Hagman and some folks, one on the 8th, one on the 9th. I will focus first on the development one, if you guys want to pull out the maps there. So development has come in front of the Board before, but the last time around, the developer was actually looking to purchase our land. That is not the case this time, our land is not on the table. They are not asking about our land. The land that they are talking about using is the blocks that are adjacent to the high school, that come out on Brooklyn Stanhope Road, I'm sorry, Brooklyn Sparta Road, and Stanhope Sparta Road, one of those, Stanhope Sparta Road, there you go, third one, third combination, Stanhope Sparta Road. It is Ryan Holmes is the developer. They came in primarily just to ask us questions about the school, about the capacity of the school, and not because they have any estimates on anything yet, but because their next step is to hold a community meeting, which they are doing on the 28th, on the 28th, at the American Legion. All of that information is supposed to come out from the town, and there'll be a community forum about that development. But so all they did was come in to ask us about the school and the school's capacity, should they get questions at the community forum on the 28th. But if you're looking at the smaller map, you see the area highlighted in yellow is where the development is, and if you look to the upper left where the compass is, that's our school and our land, which again, they are not talking about an abutment up to our land this time. We did say to them that if they were to move forward or get whatever approvals they need, one of our main expectations would be a path to the school, because it is a walking district, we informed them of that, and obviously, students would not walk along Sparta Road to get here. So we explained there are paths from other developments to the schools, and that was one of the things that we addressed with them. So we've given you what they have given us, and like I said, the next thing you should hear is actually from the town itself on this. Questions?
What is the dotted yellow line?
I believe that is their easement around the development. If you remember last time, right, the other organization, the development may have been bigger, I'm not sure, but they needed our land for the easement. That's not the case here, and the second item you have is kind of a blow-up of their proposal and the units that they're proposing to build, so.
It looks like there's going to be some kind of condos or something?
Yeah, they did show us like the three different models, but I can't speak to what they are or what they mean, other than the fact that they were mostly two or three-bedroom, two-standard models, and then a model that would meet the low-income housing requirements, which as a town, I believe, you know, the town needs to provide that, but again, that'll be out through the community, I can't really speak to that. Other questions? Questions? All right, so like I said, we should see something come out from the town about the community forum on this. And then the second thing was, we did have another meeting with all four schools to talk about the feasibility study process for regionalization. So Najeeb, just to bring you up to speed, we are talking about, since the state now pays for the feasibility studies, moving forward with the feasibility study on regionalization. And part of the process is, if you use an institute of higher learning to conduct the study, you do not have to go out for RFP, and we don't have to then assume those costs. So all four boards agreed we would move forward if there was no cost. So Rowan University is the primary institute that is doing these studies. There was talk that Keene is also doing it, we reached out to Keene, they have not been responsive at all. We gave them a deadline of this past Friday, the 9th, to respond to us if they wanted to present, they did not respond. So at this point, the only institute of higher learning that is doing the studies is Rowan. They've completed three, they have three more in pipeline, we would then be the fourth. And what you have here is a copy of the presentation that they gave to us, that talks about what are the requirements. And then the second thing is the outline of the things that they suggest, including in the study, that meet the requirements, and in some areas go above and beyond the requirements. Since they've conducted a number of these studies, they know these are things that come up. So that's what you see in front of you here. Obviously, I don't expect everybody to read it in detail right now. Sitting here, if you have questions, please feel free to ask, either in committee or at the next board meeting. We can talk about this anytime under old business as well, or certainly during my report when I bring it up. So that's where we are with this. The one question that I did want to put forward towards the Board, if you have an answer now, fine, if not, email, or we can talk about it next time, is, as part of the study process, they obviously are studying making, you know, this a full-purpose K to 12 regional, right, one umbrella. But they can study another model, so Netcon was interested in, hey, K to 12, but what about if we regionalize a middle school at least, if we can't get all four boards or all three towns on the same page? So the request was to study not just a K to 12, but a 6 or a 7 to 12, which would be inclusive of a shared middle school. And I just want to make sure the Board, our Board was comfortable with that, as well as a secondary option to include in the study. Yes?
Does Netcon, Netcon system, is that set up like ours? We have K to eight?
Netcon is K to eight, exactly the way we are at one building.
Okay, so if they do separate it into like a middle school, like you just said, does that mean that you have to have a separate building for the middle school?
Well, what we're asking is them to study the feasibility of a shared middle school, so grades 6, 7, and 8 in one middle school for Stanhope, Byram, and Netcon.
And you have to decide what school is going to be in?
The feasibility study will help outline that, yes.
All right.
Yes, because Byram has two schools.
Yeah, I know.
They have the middle school and the lower school. Now, we have one, Netcon has one.
Okay.
Right.
That sounds like a good idea.
Right, so that would be the two things we would ask them to include in the study, going from the limited-purpose K to 12, which is what we're considered now, to a full-purpose K to 12, as well as keeping independence but consolidating from middle school up.
Oh, okay.
Questions, thoughts?
Can I ask you a question back to the proposal? The last time, when our land was part of the equation for purchase, what changed that they no longer need the?
Different developer.
Different developer?
Yes.
Okay.
It is a different developer. This is Ryan Holmes, I don't remember the name of the prior developer.
I don't remember, actually, I think, I think the owner passed away since they last sent in their proposal, so I don't see them as being a viable option. I think Matia was right when she mentioned earlier, I think they were looking to put in a much larger development, which is why the easement that they needed would have needed to be partially on school district-owned land. I think this is smaller, so they're able to contain all of that need on that single property. But unlike that last one, you know, where they needed our land to move forward, the school district at this point really is not a player in the decision process. You know, this is going to be 100% as of right now at the town level.
Yep.
And I appreciate that they're providing an opportunity for residents to come out and ask questions and share their own feedback.
Thank you.
Good.
A little different than last time, huh?
Yes, very different.
When we were talking about this, years, what, few years now, five years?
Yeah, this, three folks came in, one was the actual, I'll call him the gentleman who would manage the construction of like the pipes and the roadways, and then the Ryan Holmes developer and his counterpart who would manage the actual construction and marketing of the buildings. So that's the team we met with, and again, their questions were really isolated too. If we get questions around the school and if the school has capacity, what do you look like, what's your structure, how many kids, how many classes? So those are primarily the questions that we answered.
Bigger company, so I would have more resources and everything.
Ryan Holmes is a pretty big developer out here, yeah. Than everyone.
I don't know if it's a crazy question, but when they put that development in, those kids that are going to be living in the development, if any?
If any, yep.
That means that the parents would have to drive them to the school?
Yeah, we would still be a walking district, which is what we informed them, which is why we suggested that they include a path to the schools in their design.
That's an awful long way to walk.
Yeah, to walk all the way out and around, they really can't. Those roads are not safe, which is what we explained. Yes.
Thank you.
Yep. Other questions? No? Okay, and again, if you think of anything, please, email or committee, we can talk about it further, on either topic. Okay. Where does that bring this to? Let's see here. Public session number one. Seeing no public, we will move on. So travel and workshop reports, we had a number, anybody have any questions, comments? No? All right, that'll bring us to minutes for approval. This is a couple of different meetings contained in here, because we had our regular meeting and executive session, and then our reorg meeting and the committee of the whole, all contained within, so can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Okay, this will be a voice vote, but any questions or comments? No? Okay, all in favor, say yes.
Hi.
Any no's? Yeah. And I have to abstain on number two, please.
Okay.
Do we not have a quorum on number two then, Carissa?
No, we don't.
No, we don't.
So we'll have to bring it for next time.
Bring it for next month.
Yeah, bring it forward for next month.
So we'll table number two.
Yes. Okay, next up, administrative action items, one through four, can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
And a second? Okay, go through those. Any questions or comments?
Just want to point out, if you don't mind, number three is the climate and culture survey that we've discussed, it's the contract with Rutgers. If approved this week, I will, I will sign it, which will allow us access to their platform and begin the process of putting together a committee and developing, not developing, the surveys are developed, and facilitating and administering, you know, this process to our students, our staff, and our community.
Yeah, and again, Najeeb, just to catch you up on number three there, that is a climate survey, which Rutgers has already developed, and we did a kind of our own a few years back about the climate of the school, but this is one that is organized by Rutgers and has been in use for a while that we're looking to move forward with.
And as a reminder, it's completely free, no cost to the district. And then endorsed by the Department of Education.
Okay.
Number four also, just wanted to say thank you for, to all of our Board members for to all of our board members for your continued support and all of your thankless efforts to keeping this school going. Welcome back to Mr. Iftikhar. Welcome back to Ms. Bottalotto. It's a pleasure working here, and a main reason for that is because of the support that we receive from the board. So, thank you, and happy School Board Recognition Month to you all.
All right. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Iftikhar? Mr. Pico?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharpe.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, that brings us to the Single Education Action Item, please, with a school trip. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second? Thank you. Okay. Question or comment? Okay. Hearing none? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Iftikhar? Mr. Pico?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
And Mrs. Sharpe?
Yes.
Motion's carried.
All right, next up is Personnel. Items one through six. Can I have a motion, please?
Show move.
Second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Number one is delegating authority for you to appoint personnel.
Still looking for another power professional or two.
We discussed movement on the guide during our committee meeting. And next, stodgy appointment. Any questions or discussion? No? Okay. Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Iftikhar? Mr. Pico?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharpe?
Yes.
Motion's carried.
All right. Business Services, items one through nine, motion, please?
Show move.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Questions or discussion? All right. Hearing none? Moving right through it, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Iftikhar?